I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, July 16, 2018. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times on the town's cable information channel, 1301, over the next week, and will be available for viewing on the town's website. I'm Steve McDougall, I'm the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to welcome Pastor Jeff Kersey from Mount Horb United Methodist Church. Jeff, thank you very much for being with us, offer invocation for tonight's meeting.
I asked Chief Green if I could use my phone to read just a short text to you, scripture text, from the Book of Romans, from the Message Version. It's a good charge for us tonight, "Be a good citizen. All governments are under God; insofar as there is peace and order, it's God's order. So live responsibly as a citizen. If you're irresponsible to the state, then you're irresponsible with God, and God will hold you responsible. Duly constituted authorities are only a threat if you're trying to get by with something. Decent citizens have nothing to fear." Let's pray together. Father God, we thank you for these leaders that will guide this meeting tonight. We pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment, that we as citizens would abide by law, laws that are instituted by your sovereignty, and so protect this town and use this town to be a blessing to its citizens. And may we make this a place that honors you and glorifies you and pleases you. And we ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pastor Kersey, thank you very much, what a great word. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Todd Lyle if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will call the meeting to order. On the agenda tonight, are there any deletions on the agenda? Madam Clerk, there's no deletions, but we have one addition as a presentation, it will be presentation number two. Anyone else? Hearing none, we will move right into presentations. Our first presentation tonight is from Chief Terrence Green, the Accreditation Gold Standard Award. Chief Green, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, citizen of Lexington. It's a great, uh, great day today that we received this top honor, and I'll talk about it, at the Kalia Award Ceremony on March 24, 2018, in Frisco, Texas. Lexington Police Department was awarded the prestigious Gold Standard Award, Gold Standard Assessment Award. To achieve the Gold Standard Accreditation, the agency's question voluntary allows Kalia assessors to grade their assessment in a format that focus primarily on processes and outcomes associated with the standard specific to agency policies. It works to measure the impact of accreditation as opposed to simply confirming compliance through a file-by-file review. Through three years of hard work and dedication, Accreditation Missy Silcox and her supervisor, Lieutenant Chad Snellgrove, were able to secure the Gold Standard Assessment for the Lexington Police Department Fourth Accreditation Award. In order to maintain compliance, the Lexington Police Department must comply with approximately 484 standards, accreditation standards provide the department with a modern manager tool necessary to ensure that all policies and procedures conform to the most up-to-date professional law enforcement standards. By the Lexington Police Department's voluntary in choosing to seek this higher standard of Kalia accreditation, the community can expect and receive a consistently balanced level of service and accountability from our department. Accreditation is for three years during which the agency must submit annual reports attesting continuing compliance with those standards under which was initially accredited. The first Kalia onsite was conducted in December 2008. The Lexington Police Department received their first Kalia award in March 2009 in Raleigh, North Carolina. We have maintained accreditation on onsite in 2012, 2015, and most 2018. When we received our last one in 2015, I went and got a brick and painted it gold, and I told her, "Go, let's just get gold and don't come back," and she brought it to us. The assessors were very high on Inspector Silcox, so I want to commend her, but I also want to commend the men and women of the Lexington Police Department. If you could, please join us with this presentation.
Absolutely.
Not surprised.
I'm glad you gave the message, you did all the work.
Absolutely.
We said, "Oh, we love you."
We loved them.
Congratulations. I'm not surprised with the talent that you have surrounding you there at the police department. Congratulations. At this time, we'll move into our second presentation, a very special night. We're going to let Mr. Todd Lyles read our next presentation.
Thank you. And before I read that, I would first like to say that we've got a outstanding leader, Lieutenant Colonel Brian Pipkin. If you don't mind, I'd love for you and, more importantly, your wife and children who endured while you were gone, to know that we appreciate your service, appreciate what you do. This guy is an outstanding leader, I've had the pleasure of serving underneath him. He's an outstanding and dedicated soldier, raises the standard everywhere he goes, phenomenal pilot, and was able to bring back an entire battalion, Attack Reconnaissance Battalion, back safe, 100 percent. That's an amazing feat, and we should all be very honored to have Lieutenant Colonel Pipkin here. And so, I'd like to read the proclamation. Proclamation of the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, designating Monday, July 16, 2018, as Lieutenant Colonel Brian J. Pipkin Day. Whereas Lieutenant Colonel Brian J. Pipkin is from a military family in Jamestown, South Carolina, and obtained his degree in mechanical engineering from the University of South Carolina, and whereas he's resided in the Town of Lexington for 11 years with his wife Candace and their three sons, James, Wyatt, and Simon. And whereas Lieutenant Colonel Pipkin has served in the South Carolina Army National Guard for over 20 years, has been awarded the Bronze Star, Meritorious Service Medal, the Air Medal, and the Iraq Campaign Medal, with two campaign stars. And whereas Lieutenant Colonel Pipkin served as Battalion Commander with the South Carolina Army National Guards, 151st of the 151st Attack Reconnaissance Battalion, and Apache Attack Helicopter Battalion out of McIntyre Air National Guard Base, and recently returned home from a deployment to Afghanistan. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and the Council for the Town of Lexington that Monday, July 16, 2018, is Lieutenant Colonel Brian J. Pipkin Day, and he is to be commended and thanked for his service to his country, and welcome back to the community that is proud to have him as a member. Dated the 16th day of July, 2018, signed by the Mayor, Steve McDougall.
Brian, if you don't mind, step to the microphone, we're going to put you on the spot for a minute and ask you to tell us a little bit about coming home and being home, we're real proud of you.
Well, that's on the spot, Mayor, thank you very much. Yeah, so from South Carolina alone, we deployed close to 200 soldiers altogether under the 151st ARB, we had almost 400 soldiers, and that's from four different states, Iowa, Illinois, Pennsylvania, an active-duty unit from the 3rd Cab out of Hunter Army Airfield in Georgia. We were in southern Afghanistan, based out of Kandahar and Dwyer, two different locations. We were responsible for over, well, three-quarters, or excuse me, basically half of the country, south, southwest, and west. We flew over 11,000 hours.
Wow.
We were responsible for the insertion and freeing of over 150 prisoners, Taliban prisoners. We took over 250 Taliban prisoners, or Taliban, off the battlefield. And every, one of the most important things to note, for the public to note, is it's not all US-only led forces. Every mission we did over there was in support of an Afghan force. So every air assault we did, we had Afghans in the back of the aircraft, everything the Apaches were supporting, there were Afghans on the ground. Very few American soldiers were outside the wire, most of the American forces now are out there actually doing advising and assisting. We got over there last October, and we just got home, as you saw last night. But very successful deployment, and all the guys got home.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Any comments or questions from any other council members?
Just thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Brian, thank you very much, welcome home.
I appreciate it, thanks, guys.
I'd like to thank Sammy Hendricks for giving me a heads-up on that last night and making this all happen tonight. Ms. Becky, I called her very early this morning, and she got on it and made that all possible. So thank you very much for that, too. At this time, I will move into a Vision Plan Update for July 2018. The fall schedule for the Ice House Amphitheater will announce the fall schedule on Friday, July 20, starting at 9:00 AM. Join us on our Facebook page or visit our website at icehouseamphitheater.com. The Farmers Market, the Town of Lexington Farmers Market runs each Saturday from July to September, from 9:00 AM in the morning until 12:00 PM, the Lexington Square Park. Applications are still being accepted for vendors for the 2018 season. If you are interested, please contact 803-358-7275, or email us at farmersmarket@lexsc.com. Movies in the Park, in August 2018, the Town of Lexington and Lexington County Recreation and Aging Commission are hosting Movies in the Park again at the Ice House Amphitheater. These are free admission movies, and they all begin at 8:30 PM. August 17 is the movie Coco, and June 22, we showed the movie The Darkest Hour, which was a great crowd, but not as big as the crowd at the Greatest Showman, where we had, how many people?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred people came to the amphitheater to watch a movie. That just blew my mind. It was wonderful to see all those neighbors out talking to each other, watching a movie. That concludes the Vision Plan Update. At this time, we'll move into a Traffic Update from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The South Carolina Six One Way Pair Project changed traffic flow on June 23, and is now ramping up in a few more weeks. Final lane striping, crosswalks, and permanent signage will soon bring the project to 100 percent completion. Please use caution in this area, as drivers familiarize themselves with the new traffic plan, pattern. The next phase of downtown traffic improvements include widening of the northbound direction of North Lake Drive from the end of the One Way Pair up to Dreer Street. This work is expected to start the first of the new year, 2019. Also, over the next couple of weeks, we will begin construction work for intersections improvement at both Jenny Lane at 378 and I-20 West Exit Ramp. The next Traffic Committee meeting will be Wednesday, July 25, 2018, at 8:00 AM in the third-floor conference room of Town Hall. Finally, if you're aware of any traffic issues, signal repair, unsafe roadway situation, or pothole that needs repair, please call 358-7273 and let us know.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. At this time, we will move into Public Hearing. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5311-01-242 and 243, located at 406 and 410 Montrose Drive. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, moving on. Item number two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3500-01-071, located at 254 Corley Mill Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, that concludes our public hearings, we will move right into Old Business. Our first item of Old Business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5311-01-242 and 243, located at 406 and 410 Montrose Drive. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Vittner's Woods LLC owns two parcels located at 406 and 410 Montrose Drive in Vittner's Woods subdivision, and has petitioned to annex the properties. Single-family homes are planned to be constructed on the sites. Properties in town near these are zone-protected residential 2, and Montrose Drive is already classified as an RL4 road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their June meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classifications for the parcels. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Ms. Manis makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second, some motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Do we know, did they have any more lots out there that they're going to bring in? Are we bringing in two at a time, or?
No, normally we bring in an entire phase. Mr. Hanson might know, are there any additional phases that are out there?
No, sir, that's it, this was the.
The final?
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of Old Business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3500-01-071, located at 254 Corley Mill Road. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Shaun and April Mills own .78 acres, located at 254 Corley Mill Road, and have petitioned to annex the property. A small commercial building is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-limited commercial and high-density residential. Corley Mill Road is classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their June meeting and recommended limited commercial zoning for the property and collector road classification for Corley Mill Road. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker, second, some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into New Business. Our first item of New Business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. First reading of an ordinance consenting to the establishment of the FILOT agreement on the Tidewater Boats property. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The property purchased by Tidewater Boats LLC has requested to enter into a fee-in lieu of tax agreement with Lexington County pursuant to SC Code 124410. Since the property is within the town limits, the Town of Lexington must pass an ordinance consenting to the FILOT agreement. The proposed ordinance the county is considering is attached, as well as legal description of the affected property. The property is located at the intersection of I-20 and US-1, and consists of approximately 25 acres. Also, as a note, in general, a fee-in lieu of taxes agreement is granted by and at the discretion of the county where the project is located. The industry must make the $2.5 million investment over a five-year period to qualify. Large investment projects have eight years to meet their increased investment requirements. During this period, all property that is placed in service pursuant to the agreement is subject to a fee instead of ad valorem property taxes. I make a motion for first reading of an ordinance consenting to the establishment of the fee-in lieu of tax agreement on the Tidewater Boats property.
Mr. Baker makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyles, second, some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of New Business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. First reading of an ordinance rezoning 191 Kaufman Farm Lane. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Springdale Development has requested to rezone a portion of 191 Kaufman Farm Lane from limited commercial to protected residential 2. The request is being made to allow the property to be developed into a 47-unit subdivision. Properties adjacent to this one are zone-general commercial and protected residential. May I make a motion for first reading approval?
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam, second, some motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Manis.
I would like for Mr. Hanson to talk to us about this issue at the Planning Commission meeting.
What do you want to know?
Well?
I'll explain what happened if you want me to do that.
Well, I read eight minutes, eight pages of minutes from the Planning Commission on this particular piece of property, but when you and I talked this morning, this is not the same as the amount of the agenda item that had so many questions from the Planning Commission, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
There were two items on the Planning Commission agenda pertaining to this piece of property. One was the site plan approval for the 47-unit subdivision, and one was the rezoning. In order to do the subdivision, you have to rezone the property, which is a downzone from what it currently is. The Planning Commission had some questions about the subdivision that we are working through with the developer to resolve, which will go back in front of the Planning Commission on Wednesday morning. And so, the project, the subdivision was withdrawn last month in order to give the developer some time to answer the questions. Being that it was a downzoning request anyway, the Planning Commission felt like it was okay to go ahead and recommend for the zoning change, to let that come in front of you all, to move that forward. So that's where we are.
Right, so the Planning Commission has already voted on this zoning change for this?
Yes.
Okay, because usually it has in our little background information that the Planning Commission did whatever they did, and it's not on this.
I'm sorry, I didn't include that. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning only.
Okay, that's what I needed to make sure of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Lyle.
Speaking with the developer, this particular use of this property is not a high-density thing, and it's something that prevents, there were a lot of other options that could have resulted in higher congestion of traffic, is my understanding, that's the Planning Commission's as well?
It's currently zone-limited commercial, so you, a lot of things could go in there. This particular project is a single-family development subdivision that, not, I don't want to speak for the developer, but I think we finally landed on age-restricted at the last planning.
Meaning it'd be similar to the Lexington Villas?
That's what, that's the way he presented it, yes.
Right. That was my understanding.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
In the, in the Planning Commission meeting, you gave us a number, and I can't recall the exact number, so I don't want to speak out of turn, but this is, this is going to develop to two, or 2.3 houses per acre or something, compared to our normal?
Somewhere in that, yes, sir. The density of allowance for Kaufman Farm Lane was, is six units per acre, and I believe it was, can't remember exactly the calculation, but it was 2.3, 2.6, something like that.
So a lot less.
Lot less, correct.
Than he could do.
That was my understanding as well.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hanson. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of New Business is from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3500-03-118 and 127, located at 221 Corley Mill Road. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve and Sheila Hall own 7.62 acres on two parcels located at 221 Corley Mill Road, and have petitioned to annex the properties. Corley Mill House and Gardens is located on the site. Properties in town near these are zone-limited commercial, and Corley Mill Road is classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission will review this annexation during their August meeting to recommend a zoning and road classification for this parcel, so I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Mayor Protam makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second, some motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Manis.
So this says that the Planning Commission is going to review it in August, so why are we voting on it before it goes to Planning Commission?
It's normal course of business that if we have something that it's not believed to be in any way controversial, that it comes to whatever the next meeting is that's available. If it's controversial, then we'll send it to Planning Commission first. So since it's just a regular annexation, there's not expected to be any controversy.
Right across from the church.
That's where my son got me.
That's right. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Do we know why they're looking to do this?
They were asked to annex, they're now contiguous, and they're a customer.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So were they a customer, they're already a customer now?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're paying out-of-town rates right now?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of New Business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Gibson Pond Restoration Project Reimbursement Resolution. Ms. Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Gibson Pond Restoration Project is anticipated to be ready for bid in late 2018, finally.
Everybody scream, "Yay!"
FEMA will be funding 75 percent of allowable costs on a reimbursement basis. In order to have maximum flexibility in financing initial construction costs, IRS regulations allow issuers to adopt a reimbursement resolution in order to recoup costs for capital expenditures incurred prior to the issuance of the bonds or bands. Accordingly, the town should have a resolution in place for the Gibson Pond project. The town's Bond Council drafted the appropriate resolution as a first step in the overall financing plans for the Gibson Road Restoration Project. I make a motion for council approval of the reimbursement resolution for the Gibson Pond Restoration Project.
Ms. Manis makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker, second, some motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Yesterday, I was talking to a neighbor that was a National Guard, told you might help with this, but he said that they used to do demolition work or dirt-moving work for towns and cities, and said that, said we should just ask if that's still a possibility, where they could maybe tear out the old dam, tear out some of that dirt, and save us the cost.
We can certainly check into that, though I would say this is not your grandfather's dam, so this is a highly technical, overly designed.
Yeah, when the building phase, he was saying they would do the tear-out.
Okay, well, yeah, we can certainly check into that, I don't know the answer to if there's any flexibility there for a different contractor, you know, which essentially they would be acting as.
Right.
But we can, we can check into that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any other questions? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of New Business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Boards and Commissions Appointments. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have received an application from Justin Brown, who has expressed an interest in serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals or the Planning Commission. The Board of Zoning Appeals has three vacancies, the Planning Commission does not have a vacancy at this time. Mr. Brown is a town resident, and his application is attached. I'd like to make- is attached. I'd like to make a motion for council approval of appointment for Mr. Brown to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Manis seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Lexington Fund Day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. During council's June 11, 2018 work session, Ms. Glenda Hiller, Vice President of the Lexington Community Fund Day, made a presentation and requested funding from the town for their 25th Annual Back-to-School Bash. The discussion included allowing Ms. Hiller to borrow tents and tables for their event on August 4, 2018, to help offset their costs as listed on her budget. Rental of 10, 10-by-10 pop-up tents for $899.99, and 20 economy folding tables, 72-by-30, for $1,700. It was further discussed to waive part of a residential water bill where an individual's house is used to fill up a pool and a slip-and-slide for the event. Chief Green was directed to hold off on the police department's $500 donation until such time council could vote on an in-kind donation. So what I am making a motion for is for the tent to work, for the town to work with Ms. Hiller on providing the tents and tables, and also give the green light for the police department to make their donation, and am I saying something about a water bill also?
No, that's in there.
Perfect.
Very good. Mr. Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mayor Pretem seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Ms. Manis thirds the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Manis, please.
I would like to say that I am so proud of this town council, that on yesterday, Sunday, four of us were able to meet at Office Depot. Others of us were not able to go, but donated money, and Jonathan, if you'll leave that right up here, so Ms. Hiller can see everything, donated to, and shopped, we had a great time shopping at Office Depot for office supplies that Ms. Hiller was on your list for Community Fund Day. And so, right up here, if you'll come on up to the microphone, your town council has donated 160 packs of crayons, 195 notebooks, 540 glue sticks, 120 packs of notebook paper, and 182 packs of colored pencils for you to use for the students for Community Fund Day.
Well, on behalf of the Lexington Community Fund Day, we really appreciate everything that you guys have done and have offered to do in the past, and what you guys are helping us with this year. This is our 25th year of doing this event, so we are just so blessed to have the town council, the mayor, and also the chief, who helps us from the beginning to the end of the fund day. I would like for all you guys that can come out to be a part of it. We've had Mr. Williams, and his wife has, in the past, to come out and help as well, and also with all, we have a Fall Fest that they participated. The chief and whoever else we need to ask to whatever we need. So we greatly appreciate everything that you guys have done for us, and hopefully, y'all will continue to bless us and be a part of the fun.
Very good. Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second and a third on the floor. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Hiller. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you want to get a picture, Ms. Hiller?
Yeah.
Yeah. And Ms. Hiller, I, Ms. Hiller, I have something for you. I promised you last week, so you want to come up while you get your picture.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Everybody stand down front. We'll take a quick picture.
I learned that lesson the whole time.
You'll end up with one crayon. Dan, Jonathan, thank y'all very much for taking care of that.
My pleasure, sir.
Yes, sir. That new knee is working.
Yes, sir.
Call it PT. At this time, we will hear announcements from Mayor Pretem Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Town of Lexington's Farmer's Market is every Saturday from 9 until noon at the Lexington Square Park. Come out and enjoy local produce and other vendors, especially the big, beautiful sunflowers that you see out there every week. The Planning Commission will meet this Wednesday, July 18, at 8:00 a.m. here in the council chambers. The Board of Appearance will meet on August 1 at 4 in the third-floor conference room. The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on August 2 at 5:30 here in council chambers. Come and enjoy the following movies at the Ice House Amphitheater, August 17, at 8:30, movie Coco. August 24, at 8:30, movie The Darkest Hour. Council will meet again on August 20, at 6, for the regular council meeting and the council work session. On August 13, we'd like to wish our mayor, Steve McDougall, a happy birthday, and we thank you for watching your town council in action tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments, or any other council members like to offer?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just...
Yes, sir. Mr. Lyle.
I'd like to publicly thank Chief Green. We, for some of us who don't know, on June 22, it was a major event that was avoided that could have been a lot worse, but the foresight of our police department saw an opportunity to be ahead and be proactive rather than reactive, and a robbery prevention unit was set up that monitored some key gas stations. And although there was someone injured in this event, at least it could, it could have been a lot worse. And so I do want to thank you publicly, Chief, for being ahead of the game. That's what makes Lexington great. We already know that the police department's phenomenal, and they get a lot of awards, but I just want to say again, publicly, that was another opportunity, us being out front, the tip of the spear, being proactive and steering off what could have been a lot worse event. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Ms. Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to invite our citizens to attend our Farmers Market. I went this past Saturday. Ms. Livingston talked about the sunflowers. They are gorgeous. My son always likes the boiled peanuts. We have, we had three different farmers there this past Saturday. So if you get the opportunity, please go. We also have beautiful crafts there. I spend a whole lot more money than I think I'm going to, but it's all worth it. But if you get a chance, please go and support our Farmers Market on Saturdays. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other announcements? Anybody else have anything they'd like to share? Very good. There is no news media here tonight, so public comments. Anyone here wish to comment on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting of the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, July 16, 2018. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during the week. I'm Steve McDougal, the mayor of Lexington, on behalf of town council and staff. I wish you a good evening. We will ask for a motion to go back into executive session. Ms. Manis?
I make that motion.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Mr. Williams seconds the motion. All those in favor of going back into executive session, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We are in executive session. Thank you.